Can I have a motion, please, to adjourn the private session?
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Adjourned. The meeting adjourned. I'd like to call the regular meeting for April 22nd, 2014, to order. Adequate notice that this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 8th, 2014, by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law. Please stand to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Page nineteen. Could I have a motion that the Board approve the minutes and the appropriate attachments of the agenda, regular meeting held on March 24th, 2014?
Move.
Is there... Roll call, please.
Mr. Giudano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Marnack.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
I abstained, I wasn't here.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Could I have a motion that the Board approve the minutes of the private session number one, held on March 24th, 2014?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Giudano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Marnack.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
I abstained, I'm not also.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, sorry. Could I have a motion that the Board approve the minutes of the private session number two, held on March 24th, 2014?
I'll move that.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Giudano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Marnack.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Page thirty-nine. Could I have a motion to approve payment of bills totaling nine million, two hundred, four thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-one cents? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Giudano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Marnack.
I abstained.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Could I have a motion through the adoption of this resolution, we, the Lacey Township Board of Education...
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Giudano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Marnack.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Student representatives, good evening. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I'll start by saying that at the Luke School Play, a couple weeks ago, we drew the winners of our senior raffle, and we ended up raising well over eight thousand dollars for that. Also, there is a meeting for senior parents tomorrow night at six o'clock in the auditorium for talk about prom and prom graduation and everything. And then for students, that the Assembly will be period two on Thursday. And then prom tickets will go on sale May 5th.
Good evening, I progress my absence to the last meeting. Elections for office, it's only going to be sophomore, junior, senior, and actually executive board, will be held on May 2nd. And I'll be all day, the students will come down during their history periods to vote. Junior cruise tickets are on sale now, or they will be on sale...
They were on sale.
They were on sale.
They're not on sale anymore.
Sorry. They were on sale. Junior Cruise is also May 2nd. On May 7th, the cast and crew of Seussical will go to Barnet High School to perform a song for Ocean Arts. I like to call it the Little Tony Awards. And on May 9th, we have teacher appreciation. And what we do is, students here will be able to fill out an application to which teacher they want to be for a day, and they can teach their own lesson. And that is all I have for tonight.
I can't believe you're talking about prom and elections already.
No.
It feels like we just started school. Thank you very much. Dr. Brower, recorded the superintendent.
Thank you, President Downing. We'd like to start off this evening, as we always do traditionally, with Principal Mr. Jim Hanchew, who will share with us highlights for his students of the month this month.
Thank you, Dr. Brower. I may invite the Board first, this never works, so you can see your students of the month. Our first two of the month, Brittany Beal, I believe she had a lacrosse game this evening, tonight. She's not here, but we will show her short video clip, and then we'll move on with the other two students of the month. Yes, in case of lights. Hello, I'm Mr. Hanchew of the Board of Education's Fall April, where we meet our seniors of the month. Joining me now is Brittany Beal, who is active as a team rank, within the top ten percent of her class. Brittany is also an exceptional student athlete, who is a three-sport varsity letter winner. How do you balance your time to be so successful in both athletics in the classroom?
Well, I kind of just focus on what's most important at times. So if I have a game, I'll focus on a game, and if I have homework due after, then I'll focus on the homework after. So as long as you keep once in the main focus, you can finish it and then it's complete.
So you play your calendar out and succeed. What activities are you involved with?
Well, I play soccer, basketball, cross country, sports, varsity, because it's my specialty at basketball. And I do, I'm the vice president of the club, I'm engineering technician, I'm in beautiful kids, I'm an English historian, I'm...
So you're staying very busy.
Yeah, only busy.
What do you do outside of school?
Outside of school, I play tons of sports. I go to get tennis with my friends, or I go to golf, with Kyle.
So it's a lot of fun. What are your future plans?
My future plans are go to Clemson University, fall last week, and study engineering.
So you'll be a Clemson Tiger, aligned to a Tiger.
Yes.
Well, good luck down at Clemson.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Brittany, on your selection of Senior of the Month. We'll be right back with Kyle Vanuwa. And we'll invite Brittany to come back next month, so we can give her the appropriate recognition. And by way of playing, Kyle Vanuwa, our next student of the month. Kyle's here with his mom and dad, if you'd have a round of applause for them also. Welcome back to Senior's Fall April, now joining us is Senior of the Month, Kyle Vanuwa. Kyle is involved in a number of sports and activities while maintaining high standards in the classroom, and scoring an impressive 4.72 GPA. Kyle, can you tell us about your involvement in school activities here lately?
I'm involved with the bowling team at Lacey, along with the golf team, I'm also a member of the National Golf Society, and I have a math club, a P club, I've got to involve myself in that.
Bowling, what's your highest score?
I expect a P72, my last match, my last game.
Ouch, that's pretty good. Can you explain your interest in mathematics?
I've always had an avid interest in math, ever since I can remember. And this year, I think I'm a senior in college, and I'm thoroughly enjoying it, and I'm excited to study it in college.
Sounds like a tough course, though.
Yeah.
What do you like to do outside of school?
I like to play golf, I play football, I work for Jersey Mike's, really, to make life better.
Oh, that makes sense, you know that actually, maybe someday, what would you like to do?
I'm going to be attending the Jameson University, and major in philosophy and finance, and that's from there.
That's a great school, and good luck. Congratulations, Kyle, on your selection of Senior of the Month. We'll be right back with our vocational Senior of the Month, Tyler Marks. All right, ladies and gentlemen.
We have the Board of Education, we congratulate you, and you should have a lot of luck.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce our Senior of the Month, Tyler Marks. Tyler's here with his family, if you have a round of applause for him also. Welcome back to Senior's Fall April, where we meet our outstanding seniors of the month. Joining me now is vocational Senior of the Month for April, Tyler Marks. Tyler, can you tell us about what you do at the program at vocational education school?
I am in residential construction, and we make houses, we do sheathing, roofing, siding, masonry work, and we also do building materials.
Something interesting work. What made you decide to be in the building destruction technology program at vocational school?
I took a job freshman year, and it caught my interest, and I found out vocational school had a structure program, and I kind of...
Where are some of the other schools you've been involved in?
I have been in football, golf, bowling, outside of school, I have a crime ball park, I have venture reports expected, and I'm already in the event.
You stay quite busy outside of school.
Yeah.
Where are some of your future plans?
I'm going to college for years, it depends being in college and technology. After that, I would like to run my own business for residential destruction and for tax.
That's something. Congratulations, Tyler, on your selection of Senior of the Month. Thank you for joining us for Senior's Fall April, we'll see you next month.
I'm the Department of Education, congratulations, for your vocational... You can come line up anytime, I need a lot of...
Thank you, Dr. Brower, it's always a privilege to be able to spend time with our top students, and congratulations, students, excellent job, work, thank you.
Thank you. I think what we'll do is we'll take our seats again, and we'll finish off with the superintendent's report, and then we'll go out and do a bunch of presentations. Thank you, Mr. Hanchew, and congratulations to Brittany, and Kyle, and Tyler for all that you've done to make Lacey so proud of you. At this time, I'd like to just take a moment and draw your attention to this month's superintendent's report for April 2014. And just in totality, you'll see that there are amazing achievements in each of our schools in literacy, accomplishments, in music, in service, and in recognition. And so I just want to take a moment and share some highlights with you. The first at Fork... And of course, you know, every month I talk about how proud we are of all of the students who are named in the superintendent's report. But I draw your attention on page four, where at Forkett River School, we had Nadia Montacalvo, who ranked tenth in over seven thousand students who entered an essay contest. And so we are very proud of her, and that was at the SEMA Foundation, and they came and recognized Nadia for her work. So we thank you, Nadia, and your teacher, Mrs. Platt, for what you did to bring pride to our community. Also, at Forkett River, jumping rope for heart raised over almost seven thousand dollars. And you'll see equally the same amount of, and the kinds of accomplishments that our students doing in service. I would also like to recognize Cedar Creek, again, doing their work with the blood drive. And this time, I noticed that Principal Vineska has identified that they have signed up new donors, and identified that they've saved almost three hundred and ninety-three lives with their work, so I recognize them for that. Also at Cedar Creek, 2014, all South Jersey Elementary Honors Band, congratulations to all of you at Cedar Creek. At Lenoka Harbor School, I just mentioned too, that we had that winner recipient at Forkett River, and the same contest at Lenoka Harbor, our student there recognized, just want to find it, on page ten, and that is Jacob Lodge. Congratulations to you, Jacob, you placed first in the state, seventh in the nation, out of twenty thousand students nationwide. So, great job for you as well. I also just want to mention that this Friday, if you're looking for me, you'll find me at the Christopher of Blozen Chess Tournament. And so that annual event takes place this Friday, and I wish all of our chess masters lots of luck in that competition. So if you're looking for me on Friday, that is where I will be. And at Mill Pond, I also, again, want to recognize for the Board and the community that Mill Pond just placed in the top twenty-five percent of schools in our state, and the top schools in the region, second in Ocean County in their work with the New Jersey Math League. Congratulations for you. And also, congratulations to Mrs. Tracy Shrinow and Delaney Scholl, Brody Mars, and Matthew Trout, receiving a special announcement from author R.J. Palaccio. Those students submitted an art piece for consideration, and that author is including their art piece in the work. So, just really amazing. I want to commend our school community in each and every way. You recognized autism awareness this past month with Light It Up Blue, and I even heard about some events continuing this week. So, before I conclude that, I also want to put a shout out to Principal Jason King, and the work that you did at the middle school with Mrs. Cindy Ryder for organizing the soup luncheon, and that money goes, those donations, excuse me, go to the scholarship fund. And as President Downing just said, it's hard to believe that it's that time of year, but this is the time of year when our school community gives back to our graduates and through scholarships. So I recognize all of the work that our school community and staff does to award those scholarships to our students. So, with that, we have some presentations tonight, and I don't know if we wanted our students to stay with us, and...
Yeah, I think you have homework to do, if you'd like to leave. You're welcome to stay as well, that goes for anybody that's here with their students. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations, Kyle. Congratulations, Tyler.
We will be moving again, because I do have a more formal budget presentation. But before I do, I'd like to ask Dr. Clark to report out on the new annual requirement for the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, which now has the acronym ABR. The district and school report card, so Dr. Clark?
Thank you, Dr. Brower. Beginning with the 2012, I'm sorry, 2011-2012 school year, the Lacey Township School District has conscientiously implemented the requirements of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, which we do call ABR. Each of the six schools led by our anti-bullying specialists, and each school has one anti-bullying specialist, worked collaboratively to ensure compliance with all parts of the ABR in reporting incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, also known as HIB, so I'm going to refer to that as HIB from this point forward, in promoting awareness about HIB to staff, students, parents, and the community, and in creating a positive school climate for all of our schools. At the end of the 2012-13 school year, the New Jersey Department of Education directed all school districts to participate in a survey to report on progress in the implementation of the ABR. And this was based on eight core elements and twenty-five indicators total. These elements and indicators included an assessment of how well we think we did in delivering the components of the HIV programs and approaches that we implemented, how well we provided training for all school personnel, how well we prepared curriculum and instruction related to HIB awareness and prevention, and how well we implemented HIB investigative procedures. So that was a self-assessment that each of the principals conducted at the conclusion of the 12-13 school year. Tonight, I am going to be providing the public with an overview of those HIV grade reports. And those reports are posted on our website under Critical Policies. And once you click on that, there's a tab called HIB, and you can find the assessment and the grade report there if you want to take a look at it more in-depth. The maximum number of points that each school could have awarded itself was seventy-five, and determination for whether a school met the requirements of the ABR was achieved by dividing the school's total score by the total number of indicators, which, as I mentioned earlier, is twenty-five. So let me give you the scores for each of the schools. Lacey Township High School received a score of fifty-six out of seventy-five, and that score means that the high school met all requirements. Lacey Township Middle School received a score of fifty out of seventy-five, again, meeting all requirements. Mill Pond Elementary received a score of fifty-one out of seventy-five, met all requirements. Lenoka Harbor Elementary received a score of sixty-six out of seventy-five, met all requirements. Forkett River Elementary received a score of fifty-one out of seventy-five, met all requirements. Cedar Creek Elementary received a score of fifty-three out of seventy-five, and again, met all requirements. So finally, the district's overall score was fifty-five out of seventy-five, and finally, again, meeting all the requirements of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. So moving forward and looking ahead, our school district will be working toward improving the programs that we already have in place, while evaluating potential programs for the future, taking a look at some approaches and initiatives to ensure that we are delivering targeted and meaningful HIV programs. And so I will more than likely be doing this report again, probably this time next year. That concludes my report.
And as the Board is aware, and so is our community, we include every month copies of our harassment, intimidation, and bullying monthly reports, as well as a suspension report, and then making sure that we are transparent with our fire drills and school security drills. So with that, what we'd like to do now is move towards our annual budget presentation. And this is an opportunity for the Board or community to ask questions. And so we will move one more time, transition to the audience. Join you there.
Thank you. Where can I go? Do I have any slack there?
Okay. Good evening, and once again, you have heard me say this before, that our budget developed annually is an educational blueprint for the work that we'll do in the following year, and certainly this year is no different. The budget development process is one that starts in the fall, really, and it starts at the top, and will move clockwise, at each school and department level. So what will happen is, at this level, our school administration and department heads, supervisors, start to work with our teachers and staff to develop a needs assessment as to what we're looking for in the following year. And then those requests, and not all are filled, and some remain on a perpetual wishlist. But sometimes we have some bright spots, and we can fill those, so it's an important process. But it goes next to the district and central office level, where we really start to ask questions and prioritize what our needs and wants are. And then that moves forward to the Board of Education at the committee level. So depending on the initiatives, we might move towards a curric... We might move an item towards our curricular, curriculum committee, or the finance committee, et cetera. And then it comes to the full board. And so tonight, this is the first opportunity that the entire Board has a chance to hear me present, most formally, the budget that we'll be putting forth for, at the budget hearing coming up. Our fiscal year 2015 budget priorities have shifted just a little, as compared to last year and the year before. And the first is to strengthen instructional programs. I'll be talking about some new programming, but I think best captured this year is the concept that we're strengthening what we already have, and honing and refining the reforms that we've set in place, particularly in the area of professional development, pre-K-12. And so there'll be a lot of work that we'll be doing in this next year in the area of professional development. You'll hear a lot of the terminology now that is integrated into our conversation, which is Common Core, which is PARC, and then that filters down into curriculum mapping, or, you know, school development programs. Team teaching, differentiated learning, meeting the needs of our special needs learners, integrating technology. So all of these concepts are embedded into a more global and general plan of professional development. And then finally, maintaining facilities. We do have money set aside, there have been some cuts in this area, they are general and they're broad, so we don't anticipate that anyone will see them, but we do know that there are very little new initiatives in the area of facilities, but we are maintaining. So in a three-prong approach, this particular fiscal year 2015, to strengthen our instructional programs, to capture new goals and objectives in our, in professional development, and maintaining facilities. Where are we investing our resources this year? In professional development and in curriculum and instruction. So those will be our focus areas for our goals, that'll be set forth when we start to develop school planning. This is also the time of year when we start developing individual plans of growth for our certificated staff members particularly, so we'll start to see that and memorialize that even more. This is a slide that is repeated from last year's presentation, and so we are one year closer now to full implementation of PARC for 2015. The final administration of the New Jersey ASK will take place this spring, and PARC will eventually replace all of New Jersey ASK, as well as HESPA. We join over twenty-three states or so, developing this next generation of assessments. And so we'll be testing all of our students in grades three through eight, Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, and English in grades nine, ten, and eleven. Yet to be determined is what that will look like as a graduation exit exam, if you will. So those will be conversations that we'll have here at the local level. But a lot of this budget development really started to talk about how we develop programs, assessments, goals, objectives, that are measurable, attainable, and that we can talk about with regard to how we measure student achievement. So in this budget, these are some of the new programs that I can talk with you about tonight that are in the program. And I'll take you to the deep blue block in the middle, and that is block scheduling at the high school, with a new elective class program. If you haven't had an opportunity, I would encourage everyone to jump online and view the presentation that Mr. Hanchew and Mr. Grillon did last month. And also, there's a PowerPoint there as well. So block scheduling at the high school is, right now, fully in force, moving forward, to start in September of this year. I'll take you down to the lower left, Mill Pond teaming. So Mill Pond will be extending, and under Dr. Kopax's leadership, improving the systems that have happened there in grades five and six by joining two teachers together as part of a team. And so that is going to also increase, and has already increased this year, but we're extending a little further to make sure that our class size numbers are fine and where we want them. But eighty minutes of math and eighty minutes of English Language Arts. So increased instructional time for math and English Language Arts at Mill Pond. So increased instructional time for math and English Language Arts at Milpon, and some dedicated science lab time were also some of the benefits of Milpon teaming. So I'll be talking about how we'll be supporting that in this budget. I'll take you to the lime blue, lime green box, rather, and that is ice hockey. Not sure if there are any ice hockey parents in the audience tonight, but we know that ice hockey is now a popular and growing support in New Jersey. Over ten percent growth over the past five-year period, with new teams forming every year. So we are proud to announce that in this budget build, we'll be hopefully including an ice hockey team for Lacy, and fourteen, fifteen on ice. I'll take you over to the right-hand corner, around one o'clock. We'll be including two new special education programs. The first is extending our programming here at the high school for students with autism. We'll be including a new teacher and paraprofessional to address the needs of those students who are aging into that program. And also, System Forty-four, which is an online program for challenged and reluctant readers. There is a small group instruction component there, as well as a differentiated approach to that. So we'll be extending the Read One Eighty program with System Forty-four. Right underneath that, further extension of our middle school and high school STEM program. So we have allocated resources and made a commitment to expanding STEM in that regard. And that moves along nicely to the next generation's science standards that we are anxiously waiting in New Jersey to adopt. I don't believe that that's been formal yet. We're waiting for an anticipated decision, but we are prepared for that. And STEM will be a key and core component of that. And then lastly, over in the upper left-hand corner, we've included in this budget funding for a new program for gifted and talented students, and an arts in education residency program, where we will be identifying two students here at the high school to provide seats for them if they are interested in an early release program. It's a twelve-week resident, I think it's a twelve-week program residency, where students will be able to attend the arts and education program in arts and music. So we're very excited to offer that this year for the first time for our students here at the high school. The budget plan. To achieve some of the goals that I just mentioned, we will be adding two new teachers to fifth grade at Milpon. We'll also be including one learning disabilities teacher for our child study team. Our current enrollment for students in special education program is about nine hundred and fifty students, receiving special education services, therapies, all dependent on their individual educational program. A learning disabilities teacher is involved in educational assessments, is involved as a master teacher, as a diagnostician, has to know special education law, and is integral in making sure that instructional strategies are designed and found in a student's IEP. We have an astronomical ratio right now for learning disabilities teachers, and we believe that it's affecting the quality and the compliance issues that we want to address. So there is one learning disabilities teacher in this budget. And earlier I mentioned that we will also be looking to hire one new teacher for our autistic program here at the high school, and one paraprofessional who would be matched in that classroom. The chart, which I'm certain that you're familiar with, it's one that we've shown now for a few years, indicates the operating expenditures. So over on the left, we'll just, I'll guide you through the first row, is instruction and student services. And you'll find in the first column are last year's expenditures. And there, there are thirty-four million, eight-hundred, fifty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-one dollars. And this year, you'll see thirty, almost thirty-five million, a change of only eighty-four thousand dollars. And that represents a point-two-four percent increase. The next is tuition. Slight increase there, and that, those tuition costs are always dependent and fluid at any given time when a student moves into our district and is in need of services that we cannot provide here. I checked to see where we were in the previous year. Interestingly, we're seeing that this particular line item comes up and down, but is hovering in the same area. You'll see a decrease in administration this year, a decrease in capital outlay by almost twenty-two percent, a slight increase in operations, a slight increase in transportation, a decrease in personnel services, which includes benefits, workers' comp, pension, and tuition reimbursement. And the total operating budget right now, as presented, is point-four-four percent increase. I'll leave that up there for a minute, so you can take a look. Represented in another way is the pie chart. And so you can see that fifty-four percent of our operating expenditures are earmarked in the area of instruction, taking you to the lowest level at zero percent of capital And personnel services, again, are including those aforementioned categories of benefits, workers' comp, et cetera. This year, the district will be realizing an increase in employee contributions for health benefits. This year, one point five million. And we are moving into the next tier, tier three of tier four. Next year, again, will be a higher contribution. On the revenue side, before we talk about that, I just want to point out that this budget is eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars below the threshold that we could go to, which would be a two percent without any waivers. So we are eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars below cap. Remember, the two percent cap that was placed on districts was really designed to bring predictability to taxpayers and stability to a tax rate. And so we have realized, again, and I need to say it again, a significant recognition that we had an opportunity to go eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars higher in this budget, and this district has not done that. So the operating revenues, particularly, I want to point out the state aid number, is an increase of only eighty-eight thousand dollars, point-four-two. The local tax levy change is point-four-four. You'll see a slight increase in semi-Medicaid reimbursement, and I'll just mention that again, because we only talk about it once a year. Semi is the number of students who are currently receiving Medicaid eligibility. And so districts across New Jersey are able to submit reimbursement for therapies that are covered, such as speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy. We have to require, we are required to have a participation rate. So the increase there is not necessarily that we have more students who are eligible for Medicaid. It is indicative of aggressive measures where we are, our special education department is talking with families to find out if they are receiving the services, and then we can reimburse. So I just wanted, I just wanted to point that out. School tax rate over eight years. At this time, the average households would have an increase of about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and six dollars annually, one-zero-six, with an increase average of about eight dollars and eighty-three cents per month. And the average over eight years is two-point-five-nine cents. This slide, again, shows the stability of the district's budget proposals. And in these past two years, and I will take you to that, what appears to be a deep blue or green line, is the general fund. So very flat, and has been generally flat over the years, as debt service has also changed slightly, but the general fund total has not. So in summary, for our upcoming year, our total budget increase is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. Our total general fund increase is two hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Our general fund tax levy increase, one eighty-two, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand And some of the highlights in summary, that this budget provides all current educational programs with favorable class sizes. We are making progress in science, technology, engineering, and math programs. We have targeted extension of our online learning opportunities here at the high school, part of our block scheduling program with the elective classes. And in professional development, which I focused on before, PARC training, teacher effectiveness training, meeting the needs of the special needs learner, and technology integration. Curriculum mapping continues to be a focus for us. We're almost completely mapped right now, and so Dr. Clark and her team will start to work with teachers on evaluating our maps and identifying areas of improvement as part of our constant growth process and philosophy. That concludes this year's budget presentation. And at this time, I would take any questions from the board or from the community. Mr. Savage, I just want to take a moment and thank you personally for the work that you did in developing and helping to put this budget together. And I also want to take a moment as well, want to take a moment and thank all of the administrators that are here. I know that this is hard work, and I know it's difficult for you and challenging, particularly with regard to the decisions that you need to make and the ones that you need to walk away from. So I thank you and recognize you for your work. Dr. Clark, thank you too. I know that you were integral in making sure that this budget was foundational before my arrival, so I recognize the work that you did as well. So, questions? Comments? I'd like to say seeing none. Mr. Moss.
You said the average would be about eight dollars a month for...
Average household. Average assessed value of the home.
Which assessed value?
Yes.
You use the three-hundred-seven...
Absolutely. Absolutely. I don't know if it was three-seventeen this year. I don't remember what the actual number was. We'll get back to you once we get to our seats, but we use the average assessed value of the home.
I'd like to know that.
Sure.
I'm sorry I haven't been to one as many as the whiles. I'm not sure of the form that you follow for open public comments. But in that budget, I think it's great. They're looking for new teams and ways to advance our students and hurt their interests. However, I have a concern for those students that are already in the existing activities at the school. For example, we have a phenomenal performing arts school through the middle school, the high school. We're looking to entice younger and younger individuals. And having been at Milpon School recently, seeing all these groups of children, it would be great to harness their energy to propel our music and performing arts at the high school. What they see when they come right now to our high school performances is a band, say the marching band, and I'm going to use this as an example, that represents the community. They're there for every parade, whatever the community asks of them. They go to represent the school. They go to store openings. They're out there. They're giving it their all. And most of them are either in drama and every other performing arts there is. This group of students, hardworking individuals, hasn't had a new uniform in over twelve years. I don't see...
Had that discussion.
And I don't, I'm just saying, seeing, I went all through Lacy schools. I get it when it comes to sports activities, and I've been here from the very beginning, day one when this door opened. And this has always been an area that our school has been lacking in. And there are several students that have gone on to do wonderful things, and they don't get the acknowledgement or the support while they're here.
So I just want to answer your question with process, and then I'll let you know that the conversation Dr. Clark and I just had today about the marching band uniforms. So the process is, as I said earlier in that second or third slide, the requests come from staff first, and they're brought back up. So I don't know where in the request process, the requisition process, new band uniforms have been over the past years. I can tell you that I have not cut it, but we will definitely look into it, and it seems to be a problem because it just was discussed today. So if you would like, you can get back in touch with me tomorrow. I would have an answer for you, and I can let you know. But I can affirmatively tell you that it has not been requested and cut. Okay? Okay.
Three oh nine, nine hundred.
Three oh nine, nine hundred is the assessed value that we use to calculate the eight Are there any other questions? Okay. I know that there is another opportunity for public comment and questions, so we can also hold those in abeyance. Thank you very much.
Hey, Lord, Dr. Brier, I want to thank you for that wonderful presentation. Mr. Savage, thank you for all your expertise with the budget. Thank you, Dr. Clark. And I too, on behalf of the board, want to thank our administrators for all the work you've put into the budget. It's, I wish you could have the whole world, and you have to cut to make it fit, and we appreciate all your efforts. There'll be more opportunities for comments on residents of the community, but first, we're going to do committee reports. Mr. Marne, do you have one?
Yes, I do. All right, the Finance Committee, two weeks ago, if I can find my notes. I'll tell you what we talked about. Obviously, topic A was the budget that you see presented here. That took up the bulk of the meeting. We put a lot of effort into trying to bring the budget in at a minimum tax increase this year. We all realize that we had a rather large increase last year that was unavoidable due to a number of factors. But historically, this district has had a relatively conservative tax increase, and we were able to get in a lot of the things we wanted to get in, block scheduling being one of them. I know, looking at the administrators and the audience here, there were a lot of things that we didn't get in, that they would like to see in there, and we'll certainly revisit them next year. But we certainly made an effort to try to keep the tax levy increase to a minimum this year, while still addressing some of the needs that were brought to us. We talked about a few other issues, the progress on the bleacher repairs, the status of a generator grant we had applied for through the Office of Emergency Management, which it turns out, it looks like, long story short, there's not a whole lot of money and a whole lot of organizations requesting it, and the ground rules have changed to the point where if we want to get an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar generator, we need to put up five-hundred-thousand dollars. And as you can tell from this budget presentation, that's not something that we can obviously swing. So, but once again, the biggest topic was the budget. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Marne. Mr. Schubinger, do you have a policy report?
I do. Thank you. Excuse me. Policy Committee met on April fourteenth. In attendance were Superintendent Brower, Board Member Terrell, Board Member McAvoy, and myself. We discussed a number of policy issues, including students with allergies, how to handle some of those issues. And by the way, we're going to have more to report on all this, and just kind of sharing kind of what we're talking about right now. Future meetings, we'll have some more definitive information. Also, clothing bins on school property, use of facilities by private organizations, the promotion of businesses in town as it relates to the school district. Also, athletic banquets, the school board's involvement and support of athletic banquets. And then all... Also, athletic banquets, the school board's involvement in support of athletic banquets. And then also, first and second readings of policies that will be pretty soon, very soon, include the acceptable use of computer networks, pupil assessment, the payment of claims. These are all things that are being revised. And then also, something that's been brought up in the past that we're going to be following through with, the use of social networking, a policy for staff within a district. So those are the issues that we've been talking about, and there'll be more to come on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schubiger. And I have a report for curriculum. In attendance was Board Member Giadano, Board Member Terrell, Dr. Brower, Dr. Clark, and myself. And the meeting took place on Tuesday, April eighth. The first thing we talked about was the STEM program. The committee discussed the STEM Academy program that is currently being implemented in both the middle and the high school, as Dr. Brower mentioned during the budget report. Student interest in the program is increasing, necessitating the need for placement criteria. The STEM committee met to develop placement criteria for the grade-eight STEM Academy, STEM one in grade nine, STEM two in grade ten, STEM three, grade eleven, and Capstone STEM Academy in grade twelve. The committee also reviewed a five-year plan for the STEM Academy. The five-year plan is still under construction, but will serve as a PowerPoint presentation for both students and parents sometime in May. The five-year plan will include information about the program's mission, placement criteria, and minimum performance objectives, grades that students should maintain to continue in the program. The next thing is curriculum mapping. We discussed the high school block electives. The district supervisors and darks, Dr. Clark, are in the process of developing a curriculum mapping training workshop for teachers who will map those thirty-three high school block electives. It's expected that training will start during the week of, next week, April twenty-eighth. Textbooks adoptions. We had a chemistry textbook that we're adopting. The committee reviewed the textbook evaluation forms for the purchase of a chemistry textbook for a new high school course, Principles of Chemistry. This course will also be mapped using the Rubicon Atlas Design Model and the textbook, Conceptual Chemistry. Pearson two thousand and eleven will provide students with both a hard copy and an online edition. Also, a textbook adoption for grade-eight social studies. The committee reviewed textbook evaluation forms for the purchase of a new grade-eight social studies textbook, A History of the World, Early Ages, McGraw-Hill two thousand and fourteen. And the purpose of purchasing a new textbook for grade eight is to accommodate the realignment of subject matter instruction from grade seven to grade eight. The purchase will include, again, a hard copy and an online edition. We also discussed the Ocean County College Jump Start Program. It's a high school partnership. The curriculum committee reviewed a proposal to offer high school seniors an opportunity to participate in six OCC college-level classes as part of a cohort. Successful completion of the program will allow students an opportunity to graduate high school with eighteen college credits as part of their transfer. The cost to students will be eighty-one dollars per credit. Eighteen credits would equal one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, quite a deal when it comes to college tuition. The district supervisor, Will Zalinski, is working to finalize program details with Ocean County College Jump Start Coordinator Eileen Schilling and Principal Handshill. So more information will be forthcoming in that, about that. Also, Ocean County Arts High School Program for gifted and talented students. The committee discussed the Ocean County Arts High School Program, a program sponsored by the Ocean County College that offers advanced-level training provided by professional artists to artistically gifted and talented high school students in Ocean County, and where acceptance into that program is by audition only. If accepted, the students will be released from their regular high school classes one afternoon a week from February to May. The committee agreed to sponsor one Board of Education tuition-paid seat in the program for a cost of a hundred and fifteen dollars, which includes transportation by the Ocean County Arts High School.
President, I don't mean to correct you, but I need to correct you. I think we designed two seats.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, two seats.
Okay.
So there'll be two seats.
For a hundred and fifteen dollars each. Okay, website redesign. The committee reviewed a draft of the Lacey Township School District website, redesigned and made several suggestions, this was a big topic, regarding the color palette choices and background photo scene. Dr. Clark will take the information back to the Technology Committee for revisions. The new website will be unveiled on or around July first, two thousand and fourteen. And I must say, it does look very nice. And last but not least, we talked about the Blackboard Engage and the Parent Portal. The committee reviewed plans for the implementation of a parent academy that will acquaint parents with Blackboard Engage and the Real-Time Parent-Student Portal, specifically what the differences are between the two platforms and parents access each from our website. So look forward to that coming soon. Okay? And that is it. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Residents of the community. If anyone has any comments, I know we had it for the budget, but anything else? Mrs. Descendes?
Regina Descendes, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. On page eighteen of the Agenda Bills and Claims Report, or page thirty-seven, I'm not sure how you look at that, but there's eight million dollars in expenses on this one page, and there's some large items on here I just wanted to ask about. Item number one says total for Chase Manhattan Bank, two-point-three million. What kind of a payment is that?
What page number are you on?
It's page eighteen of the Bills and Claims Report, but it's page actual thirty-seven of the agenda. It seems that most of tonight's bills are on this one page. Of the nine million paid out, there's a million on this one page.
That's a debt service payment.
That is a debt service payment, two-point-three million. How many projects is that involved? More than one, I would imagine.
I believe that, I'm not sure.
That could be one single payment?
Well, it's principal and interest.
Principal plus interest, okay. Item number three, Den Tech Services, one hundred and fifty-four thousand. What is that for?
That was the technology, that was the completion of the technology project that we undertook.
Is that the final payment to the consultant?
Yes.
Okay, because I thought that was passed already. Item seven is payroll benefits for the public's knowledge. It's one million ninety-nine thousand dollars. The payroll account for this past month is four million sixteen thousand dollars. The item number nine, public employees' retirement system, is that a once-a-year payment, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars? Is that once a year?
Yes. Okay. Could that be longevity?
What exactly is that for?
No, that's the PERS retirement, that's their pension. It's our contribution towards PERS employees' pension.
It's not for longevity at all. It's just the pension payment. Okay. Just to be clear on that. So, the budget presentation just noted that the contribution for benefits for twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, one-point-five million for the public's knowledge that covers only one month and a portion of another month, benefits, expenses. Something needs to change there. The public needs to pay less for benefits. The PTSA is having their craft fair this coming Saturday, April twenty-sixth, from ten to three P.M. in the high school. There hasn't been a craft fair in a couple of years, so I hope everyone plans on coming and supporting this worthwhile event. There will be many handcrafted items for sale. And it's sure to be a busy affair, and WOBM's van will be there also from ten to twelve noon. Last month, I had hoped that someone was going to ask this question, and they didn't. So now I want to ask, if Mr. Stein could give an explanation or a definition of moral turpitude?
In what context?
Well, I've been reviewing some contracts over the last few months, and I have found that there are no morals and ethics clauses in any of the administration contracts. And I even found a sample contract on the New Jersey School Boards Association website for superintendents, and that also did not have any morals or ethics clauses in them, and I was just wondering why not.
I'd have to see what you're referring to. It's a very open-ended question you've just asked me, and I'd have to see specifically what you're referring to. And I'd have to look at the contracts to see if they're covered in some other language.
Covered in some other language?
Yes.
All right. I will drop something off at the district office tomorrow for you to have a look at then.
Well, wait a second here. How much is, we're not going to have a member of the public authorize us to incur legal...
Well, I'll drop it off for anybody who wants to look at it with the question.
We'll have the superintendent discuss it with the president, because only the president is authorized to.
Yeah, just pause the question.
Because Mr. Stein doesn't work for free.
No, and then you guys do whatever you want with it, but that's the question I have. And however you derive the answer doesn't really matter, okay? I brought this book again tonight, the SAT prep book. It's never too early to get your high school student one of these books. You don't have to get them brand-new for, you know, a lot of money. You can get them used on eBay as cheap as ninety-nine cents. One or two tests in this book. You don't have to do the whole thing cover-to-cover. But this will greatly improve any student's SAT score. It could mean free college tuition. Twelve fifty or better gets a full tuition scholarship at Stockton. In the top five or ten percent of the class, I can't remember the exact stats, but it's really important to study and prep for the SATs, and the high school offers a course. And anyone who can should sign up for it, and the sooner the better. It really doesn't matter. You can start sophomore and junior year, you know, prepare for the SAT. It really means a lot to the district if we can improve SAT scores. I have a few more comments that I acquired from the public over the course of the last month. I received an email from someone that had viewed last month's meeting and called Mr. Martinak a spinmeister.
Excuse me?
And I had to defend, yeah, they called you a spinmeister. And it was, of course, a new word and a funny word, but I defended you because I knew you were not the lone spinmeister. You did not read the district's response to the Comptroller's report all by yourself. Someone helped you write that, and I didn't think it was fair that this person had called you a spinmeister.
Well, first of all, I think it's inappropriate. I mean, even if you do it in the guise of, I read this online anonymously to choose those words to be critical of people.
Oh, I didn't...
Insults.
No, someone wrote it to me about you, and I was defending you because I knew you didn't write that yourself.
Well, thank you for defending me, but you just defended me with a kind of a backhanded way of doing it. You're standing there insulting me personally. I'm not, I do not appreciate that.
No, I didn't.
I always try to be a professional up here, and I would just request you do the same.
I just wanted you to know that someone said that.
So what is, Mrs. Descendes, what's the point of it all?
The point is, this room is empty, and hardly anyone comes here. And people are discussing the Comptroller's report, and I just wanted you to know that that was said. That's why I brought it here, because no one else comes here. Now, I did get a comment via email from Mr. Palczeski about the Comptroller's report. And he would have come here personally tonight, but he was rather ill and said he couldn't make the trip. But he said, sure, bids were not required for the architect, but if that is the board and administration's attitude, is that what you expect from the students, only doing the bare minimum to get by? That was his comment. And then this morning, Mr. Hobie would have liked to come tonight, but he was unable to come out as well. So he gave me a written statement, and I have it on his stationery, and he gave me a copy for the board, which I will leave with you. And he addressed it April twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, to whom it may concern. Since I moved here to Lacey sixteen years ago after holding public office in freehold, I have been very carefully studying the actions of the Lacey School Board. I am appalled by these actions, including the unfair removal of a board member and the unwillingness to professionally develop the solar project. The board refused to even look into renting the panels, which would have stopped the need for bonding, and also looking into a competitive engineering firm's contract, all of which has caused the taxpayers a huge amount of money. It's time for the board to take the bull by the tail and face the facts. I am formally requesting the resignation of the chairman and the full board for highly unprofessional actions. Sincerely, Robert Hobie, and his phone number is on this letter if anyone would like to speak to him about it. Now, I did have an opportunity to read the Comptroller's report myself. And I have to admit, there wasn't much in there that was a surprise to me, except for one fact. I was really surprised that it said there was failure to have the board attorney review the solar project contract. It was a nineteen-point-eight-million-dollar project, and I was really astounded, and I can't believe it got even by me, that the contract never went to the district's attorney.
That's not correct.
You, well, then why did the comptroller write that?
You'll have to ask the comptroller.
There's several things.
If you're, with what you have, if you have quoted the comptroller correctly, and I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know, but if you've quoted the comptroller correctly, that's not correct. What I reviewed and participated in the preparation of the contract specifications, which becomes part of the contract.
Part of?
Yes, because it's a significant part of the contract. In fact, it is the major part of the contract. I drew the front end of those documents. What I did not do, was not involved in, was to review the architect's contract. But that's only one part of it. The major part of the project, which is the specifications, I was deeply involved in that.
Was that the Ray Angelini contract you're referring to?
I'm sorry?
The Ray Angelini contract, is that the one you're referring to?
Well, that would be one of the contractors who would be subject to the documents that I prepared, yes.
Okay, I believe the Comptroller's report was specifically referring to the nineteen-point-eight-million-dollar estimate contract by DeCara Rabino, not the Ray Angelini contract.
That's, it was not a nineteen-point-eight-million-dollar contract estimate. You're mixing terms. It was not a contract.
Clarify it then.
It was not a contract. That was an estimate.
Right.
Which was sent to the Department of Education for approval, and was approved by the Department of Education. And it was only an estimate, not a contract.
Okay. I will be seeing the comptroller very soon. I did an open request for the file, and it should be available next week. Thank you. And I will drop off, you know, whatever you decide to review or however with the contract, and I'll address my question and however you choose.
You may drop it off to Dr. Brower.
Yeah, however you choose to answer it is fine. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mrs. Descendes.
Yes.
On March thirty-first, you and your husband met with Dr. Brower and I.
Yes.
And you read a prepared statement to her.
Yes.
Of which Dr. Brower stated that you were personally attacking her.
Really?
That's what she said.
Okay.
She said that to you. And in their document, you stated that I was involved in criminal activities.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did.
How so?
You said that there was, someone wanted the nineteen-point-eight million to be overage on purpose. In the document, you talk about myself. In the, in your document, you talked about myself.
My notes.
You also said that there's suspicion of a hiring of the architect, and...
I was, personally.
Well, again, you stated these statements to Dr. Brower. I asked you for a copy of that document, and I'm asking you again if I can have a copy of that document. You said you were going to check with your attorney. Have you done so?
I'm not giving up personal notes. It was just notes.
It looked like a prepared statement.
It was written down. But I didn't even put my name on it, nothing. It was just my notes so that I wouldn't forget to mention specific things. And I did not accuse you of anything specific. Those were my personal observations based on what I went through the early months of two thousand and eleven and for several months during two thousand and eight when I asked a lot of questions. Those were my personal observations. I stress that to you.
So the document that you prepared, you're not going to give me a copy?
I don't think so, no. There's no need.
Can I just put a closure on this topic? Just for the record, for the public, you have the right to your opinion.
Right, and that's what it was.
But the Comptroller's office spent thirty-two months investigating this, requested thousands of pages of documents. They found no, nothing illegal?
No.
Nothing improper?
No.
Nothing unethical? As a matter of fact, they didn't even mention the Lacey Township School District in the alert.
Okay.
So just before people throw out words like illegal or improper, they found none of that. And they've got an office full of attorneys, and they spent two and a half years and found nothing.
Okay, do you know why?
I just want to clarify that for the public.
By any chance, do you know why the investigation took almost two and a half, three years?
I do not, because they got all the documents they asked for from us within a matter of days.
Well, I'll tell you why, because I found out. Do you want to know why?
You can speculate if you'd like to.
No, I did ask. I did ask why it took so long. And I don't know, it was six to twelve months into the wait for the results. I had made a phone call, and when I... I had made a phone call, and when I called the Comptroller's office, I was told that the Lacey project numbers were so bad that the comptroller pulled the records for thirty-three other solar projects in the state and examined them all. And until they concluded all the examinations of all the solar projects that received forty percent debt service aid, that was why it took so long.
Well, could you tell us who you spoke to in the Comptroller's office?
Yeah, Mrs. DeSantis, just to clarify, are you stating that the state comptroller's office discussed a, an investigation involving the school district with you, a member of the public, is that what you just said?
They weren't specific.
I'm, I'm asking you, did, I thought that's what you just said.
Could you give us the name and phone of that person?
Yeah, it was a person that.
In fact, if you could drop that off at the office, because.
It was a very person that came and took my records from me, yeah.
One of the issues with this project is the, the report should stand on its own at the end, but there's lots of speculation and people saying, I heard this and I know that and I, so either the report stands or it doesn't, but I would like to know if the Comptroller's office is telling somebody else something different than they told the Lacey Township School Board when we inquired.
But like I said, I'm going for a file review next week.
It, it's not a report.
It's an alert.
It's an alert.
It, it, there's a big difference.
Yeah.
It's not a report.
It's an alert merely as guidance to avoid this kind of overage in the future, especially since forty percent debt service aid was involved with the project, that was the primary reason that the case was looked at.
Okay, so you will drop that information also off to Dr. Brower's office?
Sure, I'll be there tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. Are there any other comments? Mr. Moss?
Before Mr. Moss takes the microphone, I just need to clarify something, um, for the members of our viewing public that are watching. Um, so this message goes right out to the students. Mrs. DeSantis, I certainly appreciate, um, your concerted effort to help our students prepare for the SAT. However, um, the SAT has changed significantly, so if the students go to purchase that older book, they will be at a, a very huge disadvantage. So, I'm going to encourage our students, if you are looking to prepare for the SAT, to contact your teacher, your counselor, Mr. Solnier, Ms. Esch, Mr. Bannon, Mr. Hanchu, to get the accurate information on how best to prepare because the SAT has undergone significant changes, and I would be concerned and I would feel remiss if I didn't clarify and correct that, so that's all I want to say.
But excuse yourself, but it's not that, the format has changed.
But the format has changed significantly. Mr. Moss?
Thank you, Bill Moss, Biscayne Drive, Fort Good River Beach. Just a question for Mr. Savage. I noticed on tonight's agenda on page forty-two, you're transferring two hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars from health benefits to transportation equipment. The very next two items are three buses that were buying the exact same amount that you're transferring from health benefits. Why do you have so much money in health benefits, was it purposely put there for the buses?
No, actually, the buses, we took out in next year's budget, so, and, and we're gonna buy them this year because we have extra money in the health benefit account left over from this year.
Yeah, the way this process works, Mr. Moss, just for your knowledge and the public, because we just went through this on the Finance Committee, is the state sets the, uh, health benefit premium, we're in a state health benefit plan for January to January, and we have to do our budget from July to July, so we don't know, we actually have to do our budget in March or April. We don't know in April, when we put a budget together precisely what the health benefit costs are gonna be. In this case, they came out a little bit lower and that money is now being used to pay for buses.
And because that's such a big line item, uh, even a, you know, one or two percent change is, is significant.
Now, what I'm looking at as a taxpayer is, there's two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars that went on our taxes last year for health benefits that we didn't have to have.
We didn't know that.
We didn't know that, I mean, we don't, I won't know next year's.
But you did, I mean, even though you didn't know it, and now you're topping that again this year with another hundred and eighty-four. That was two hundred and twenty-two thousand, that really wasn't necessary last year on our budget, even though you didn't know.
But there was no way to tell it wasn't necessary, so here's what we did for you as a taxpayer. Next year, we have three buses we have to replace, and what we've been doing is leasing buses, but it's more cost-effective if you can buy the buses, so since we have the money available in the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget, we're gonna buy those buses, and for the next three years, you won't be paying for them as leases in the budget, for five years.
Five-year lease, and we would've paid an additional ten thousand dollars to leave on interest to lease them, so that's why we did this.
Two hundred and twenty-two thousand to lease them?
No, the, we're, we're not leasing them now, we're buying them outright, but we would have.
You would have paid two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to lease them.
Plus ten thousand dollars of interest on the leases.
Yes, alright, that's all right, thank you.
Any other comments?
Good evening, Tim O'Connor, Sinclair Avenue in Lenoka Harbor. Mr. Martin, last week, you read the statement, uh, that was the board's position in reference to the Comptroller's report. And I said I would back off last meeting and I want an opportunity to absorb what it was that you said. My interpretation, my opinion, or whatever you wanna call it of this, is that the state went and did an investigation that grew into a statewide investigation, and they found out that there were problems statewide. That probably, and again, this is just my opinion, the best way to handle that, the way that the state usually does, is they put on an alert to say, look, this has happened in the past, let's not do this again. So, you know, to actually say that there was actually no wrongdoings or anything like that, in the alert, it did say the district paid the architectural firm four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars more than it would've had to have paid the firm. Now, that's because we wrote a contract that said he was allowed to charge us based on the estimate and not the actual cost.
Well, there's two parts to that, first of all, we asked the state where they got that number from, and they couldn't tell us. We sat in a meeting in the Comptroller's office and said, would you explain to us how you calculated that number? And they said, no, we don't, we don't have to show you how we came up with that, I was there with Mr. Stein and Mr. Savage, I was flabbergasted, by the way.
Well, they don't, but that's eight million dollars, it's four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
No, there, but the second half of that is the, and I talked about this, I think, last month, but let me refresh for everyone. The, the rate for the architect's fees was not set solely on seven-five percent, seven-point-five percent of the nineteen-point-eight million dollars. The architect's fees, first of all, are only on the construction cost, not some of the other costs that are in the project. But on top of that, the normal range for that kind of work, the standard in the industry, and not just school construction, but in, in private construction and, and where I work, is roughly eight to ten percent for A and E fees on new construction, ten to twelve percent on renovation, because there's more unknowns and problems with renovation. With this project, we, that was a starting point for discussions, but we looked at whether this was more like new construction, more like renovation. We looked at how many buildings had to be looked at, how much engineering work was going into developing the bid package, and we came up with a number that was seven-point-five percent. Had the estimate been lower, we still would've been in a negotiation with the architect who would've looked at, I gotta go out and survey six buildings, I gotta develop as-built plans, I gotta develop plans for the solar installation, the energy integration, put together the bid packages, review the bids when they come in. The architect, yeah, the architect would probably not have taken seven-point-five percent of a smaller amount. I mean, this is negotiated based on the scope of the job, so it wasn't just, hey, you give us a number, we'll give you seven-point-five percent of that.
He did his job, he was supposed to go out and survey the buildings, he was supposed to do some work for that.
And he did that work. He did that work, he did all that work, as a matter of fact, he.
And so, we paid the architect on eleven million dollars, or we paid the architect on nineteen?
We paid the architect, whatever the architect's fee was, that was in the proposal we put forth to the public and that we gave to the state in New Jersey for review and approval, and that was approved in two thousand eight. We said, here's the scope of work.
And it was based on the nineteen million dollars.
Well, it was based on what we negotiated, it was seven and a half percent of nineteen million dollars, or it was ten percent of thirteen million dollars, or whatever that, you know, however you wanna look at it. It wasn't just pick a number out of the air, multiply it by seven-point-five, and that's what we're going with. And I think it's important to remember, the architect did all that work, I mean, what we paid him for, to come out and inspect the buildings.
We'll get to that.
And, and they, well, what, but let me tell you, they actually found the roof problems that we had.
Which is his job, he should've found that problem, so we're gonna pay him another sixty-two thousand dollars because he found a roof that was bad?
That, yes, okay. We didn't pay him another sixty-two thousand dollars.
Well, we paid him seven and a half percent of what the roof cost, you told, in your, in your response, you came, well, let me just, in your response, gonna print it out from the website, you're basically taking credit for two million dollars for the new roofs installed in the high school and middle school.
That we didn't pay for, we did not pay for that, they were covered under warranty.
Right, and that's what the ar, that's what we paid the architect to go out and do, he's doing his job. So, why, why is that a big line item that he found all this whatever? I mean, if, if, if you go to put new things on top of a roof and you go up there to survey the roof, to measure the roof, to find out where to put it, and you see there's a defective roof, you don't go ahead with the project.
That's right, and we did, so he did exactly what we paid him for.
That's his job, that's his job, but in your, in your response, the Comptroller's report.
But no, no, the state comptroller's report makes it sound like we paid him for work he didn't do, he did all that work.
Oh, no, your, your things, that you, your response is making it sound like you're taking credit for that eight million dollars is the things that we paid him. See, I'm a mathematician for a living, I don't understand how you're coming up with your numbers.
Well, I'd be, I mean, I think I've explained it in the response, we've, we explained it here three years ago.
And I didn't accept it back then, the numbers didn't add up back then.
Well, I'm sorry if you can't, I'm sorry if you can't.
And I was told, give it a few years, because we need the numbers to massage out a little bit. Well, a few years has gone by and the numbers, it's still almost impossible.
Well, if you look at the numbers, what you'll see is that this project has had a tremendous return on investment for this district. We are millions of dollars ahead, the Lacey Township taxpayers.
Not according to your last sheet in your report, we're not, we're a million dollars in the hole this year.
Yeah, we are. No, we're not, we're.
You put these solar panels on the roofs and we're only out of pocket six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
I don't know.
That's per your sheet.
No, it's not per my, Mr. O'Connor, we are ahead by millions of dollars in the black on this project, and it hasn't cost.
How, okay.
I'll tell you how, okay.
I've been asking this for three years.
Okay, we got.
It's called a profit-loss thing.
We got five million dollars worth of improvements to our buildings, which we said we were gonna get. New heating systems, new roofs, new doors, new windows.
Right.
We got three, wait, wait, wait a minute, let me finish, let me finish, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give you the math here, okay? Just let me finish, please, and then you can ask.
I don't understand that five million dollars.
Just please let me finish, please, just let me run through this, if you would, be so kind. We got five million dollars in improvements in, in the windows, the doors, the roofs, the new heating system, et cetera. We got three-point-two million dollars in solar renewable energy credits, we have over two million dollars in electrical savings. We got almost a million dollars, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, whatever it is, in the BPU grant for doing this project, filling out the paperwork. We got a, we got a grant. We've got, still have SREC's coming in, we still have energy savings accruing every year, and we have the eight million dollars that we did not spend on the project, that we got essentially at sixty cents on the dollar. If you all add all that up, we've got essentially twenty-one million dollars in benefits that we signed a note to, to pay interest and principal on eleven-point-nine million. We are ahead of the game.
You lost me there, I did not.
Well, I, I mean, I, I, that's the.
I'm, I'm sorry, that you're.
If you add up all the benefits and you add up, well, I mean, they're, they're in, they're in the report we put on the website, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how to explain it more clearly than, here's all the benefits and here's all the costs, and the benefits add up to a bigger number than the cost.
Well, your, your thing right here, for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, the debt service on the bonds, one million, six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The debt service, we had to pay, no, debt service aid, I'm gonna ask you to interpret, the next column here is debt service aid. What is?
That's the amount of money the state paid for that project.
So, the state is giving us five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay down the one-point-six million, so that leaves one-point-one million dollars. Doing a new math, one-point-one million dollars. Okay, now, the solar renewable energy credits, it says five hundred and forty-one, which is an estimate. Now, we're not selling them this year. I'm, I'm, I'm on the last page of your, uh, I printed it out from the website. The school's, the district's response to the state comptroller's.
Okay.
So, then, the next one here is five hundred and forty-one thousand for solar renewable energy credits. We're not selling the SREC's this year, uh.
Uh, we re, we received some funds back in July that were from SREC's from, this past year.
From, from last year.
Yeah, but we did receive it in this current year, the funds.
Right, but we're not selling any for this year.
We haven't decided on that yet.
Okay, so, that's five hundred and forty thousand dollars that you have, that we haven't seen yet, and we don't know what it will or will not be. And then six hundred and forty thousand dollars in energy savings. That means we're four hundred and, somehow a thousand dollars in the hole this year.
I, I don't have, I don't have the chart you have, but, you know, I'll, I'll go back to the.
I mean, that's just the numbers off your chart, I mean, it, it, you know.
You know what, may I suggest maybe we meet, uh, together and we can discuss this part of the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I'll go through it, this, I, I, anybody that I've sat down with.
What the public need to know, the time we borrow so much money of four percent interest.
Well, you know, I've tried, Mr. Mr. O'Connor, I've tried to explain it a number of times, and, and when I've had the opportunity to sit down with someone and run through all the costs and all the benefits, I haven't met a person yet that hasn't said, yes, this was good for the Lacey Township School District. We are ahead of the, of the game in so many ways with this project that, that, you know, despite, if you wanna argue over the four hundred thousand dollars architect fees, which I disagree with, we are millions ahead, the taxpayers of Lacey are millions ahead. For three years, they spent, they spent almost nothing on debt service, including debt service on this building and other projects. We've been, we've been bringing in SREC revenue, I mean, there are just so many ways this benefits us. So, if you wanna sit down, I'll try to simplify it and step you through one side, all the costs, one side of the ledger, all the costs, the, the other side, all the revenue and savings, and, and maybe that'll make it clearer.
Man, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just having a real serious, hard time understanding this thing, and I deal with numbers as a, you know, that's what I do for a living. Another thing I, I, I will take you up on that.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll pursue this again after we do that. Another point that I wanna make on another topic is, you know, back in the eighties and nineties, a lot of people moved to Lacey Township because we had the best schools around. Then in the mid, um, two thousands, ratings started to decline a little bit. In two thousand and ten, while I was at these meetings, I said, this year we hit a D rating. I was told that you can't just take one year, you have to average that one bad year with the prior two years and take an average over three years, which meant we still had a C rating. We are now three consecutive years of a D rating, so it's a solid D. This is not a positive trend. You know, I, I, I mean, it, it, it's just the parents of this school district.
Are you talking about the Star Ledger SREC report, what do you, what report?
I don't have a copy of the, the title of which one that one was, there's several of them out there, which, with these ratings, let me just shoot off, I gotta ask this question, why does Milpon School have such a higher rating than all the other schools in our district? I mean, it's an eight when all the other schools were a five, and that was on one of the, the newspaper, the journal that was on, that seemed like an odd link.
It would be inappropriate for me to comment on something that I don't have the name of or I don't see in front of me.
Okay, well, no, even tonight, the, the people that you gave accolades to were out of the Milpon School, we seem to be having a lot of positive things coming out of the Milpon School, which is excellent, but.
You, you heard me say tonight that we're in the second year now of increasing instructional time in language arts and math. So, that's in its second year, very much in infancy, and with regard to the school performance reports that have just come out, that's generally a new report, and it's important, and, and you know what we do with the annual student achievement report, which I will do again in the fall, but I will break down which parts of that report we want to make meaning of. You know, looking, we can't keep looking back, we're not going that way, we're looking forward. And looking forward, what we do know is, we're in, we're in a, a state of transition from what has been student achievement tests from New Jersey, the ASK and the ESPO, that's moving away. They have to benchmark that test, they'll do that in two thousand fifteen, so this is a whole new world. And so, what we need to do is, rather than have the Star Ledger or New Jersey Monthly or whoever, whatever other news outlet is creating their own proprietary recipe for how they're going to rate schools, we have to develop what we believe is our best formula to identify how we want to improve. Because taking all this information, whether it's attendance, whether it's dropout, whether it's SAT, whether it's ACT, whatever it is, we can't just synthesize it and evaluate it if we don't have it. And I don't have anything in front of me to respond to why Milpon this year.
Kind of, one of the things that I do, do recall was from the state of New Jersey, and, uh, they had listed things like they were talking proficiency in math, at the high school proficiency, the different schools, all the different schools. And, uh, as I recall, we went from a seventeen percent proficiency to a fifteen percent proficiency. I'm just saying, there's more, you know, I, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of different trends.
But then I'm gonna say on which test, on which grade level, and what year.
Well, that was the high school, that was the high school, and that was in, that was in math.
Okay, so. I, then I have to say, what population, is it regular ed, is it special education, how many students were in that cohort? There's so many questions to drill down that I. There's so many questions to drill down that I just can't, and believe me, I want to be able to, to affirm for you and answer you. I just don't have it in front of me to say, this is my professional opinion on this, this or this.
Okay, with me tonight, I do have, on Monday, February 24th, 2014, on New Jersey Magazine, it lists the top New Jersey high schools out of the book. Lacy Township High School ranked, per this newspaper or magazine article, 225th out of 257 schools.
Name, name the first 10 for us.
I just took out Lacy.
All right, go back and look at the first 10 for me, and then let's talk about it again next month.
Okay, I will.
And then look at the next 25, and we'll talk about why it's different. I mean, I could probably, you know, J.P. Stevens, I could start tossing out some topics, names that I think might be up on top. Some of them are magnet schools.
I, I understand what you're saying with the statistics and everything else. When somebody goes to buy a new house, they go to the state list. And these states are giving out, maybe not the states, the magazines, or all these people that you're saying or whatever.
Absolutely.
They affect our community.
Absolutely.
And the ratings in these are not anything.
Absolutely.
And, and it's not that we're not educating our students, because we are, you know, but what I'm saying is, I think there's a lot of room for improvement, and what you're seeing, you inherited this, Dr. Brower, I'm gonna say you inherited this problem, and I, I know you are trying really hard to come up with a solution. But I'm seeing such a disproportionate number in this town of house break-ins, the drug arrests and everything else, and they all seem to be clustered in this 18 to 24-year-old group. Why?
That's typical of criminal activity. Eighteen to tw- that's typical of criminal activity, 18 to 24, without question. One of the highest demographics for criminal activity.
Okay, well, demographic speaking, in Lacy Township, I've been here for 30-some years, and the crime in the last two, three years is just going off the charts.
That's a, that's a police matter, and perhaps you should be speaking to Chief Paprotto about that.
Well, you know, when people talk about in the schools and the growth of a child and everything else, they talk about the importance of parents, the role that parents play in all this. And, you know, most of the people that I talk to, right away go to, it's not the school district's fault, it's the parents' fault, that kids don't achieve or aren't, whatever. All that I'm saying to this board is, we have no control over what parents do in their house. We do have control over what we do as a Board of Education. And, you know, what can it hurt if we improve the education that we're giving out to our children? I gotta come back to the industrial arts. I think we are just so badly, not, in a community, there's called ergonomics. You've got people that repair cars, that build houses, that are plumbers, electricians, all these other things. Not all these people are gonna go to college. The school district, as a rule, which is admirable, is pushing for 100%, go to college. That's great. But when you boil it down to a community, I don't think that's doing all of our students such a service, because they're not all going to go to college. And we went through the whole thing with the vocational schools, and we found out that percentage-wise, it was not that many.
Mr. O'Connor, where did you hear that everyone on this board or with the administration?
This is what this board's been telling me for three years.
I didn't ask, I didn't finish my, can I ask my question?
This is what this board has been telling me for three years.
Go ahead, answer my question. I didn't answer, I didn't ask yet, but answered.
This board?
Where have you heard from this board that every single person up here on the administration of the board thinks that our number one priority is to make sure kids go to college? Because if you heard that from me, you were not listening.
We'd have to go back to videotapes.
Never.
Because I have been lectured.
You should go back to the tapes.
I have been lectured.
A hundred times I've said.
That that is the primary goal.
Okay, can we, can we move on, because we have a.
Some of us on this board haven't even been here for a year.
I know, I know, and that's not fair. I realize that.
Just blanket statements, I think, just be a little careful. Maybe some people feel that way, but I don't think it's fair to say everyone feels that way.
Let me ask this question, and again, I have no idea. With all these testing and things like that, if somebody was in a vocational, do they have to do the same college preparatory testing and things like that?
In vocational schools, if they're in a public school?
If they're in, if they're in a public schools, do they also have to do this?
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't know, I'm just curious.
If they're in a New Jersey public school.
They all come under the same title.
Yeah, they're required to take.
All right, alls, alls I can say is, we spend a lot of money as a taxpayer, I'm looking for a return on the investment, and it's not money. It is academic achievement, is what I call the ultimate return on the money. And that's prosperous, young adults coming out of our schools, assimilating into society and becoming productive adults.
Any other comments? Please state your name and address.
Ellen Vidal, Quailing, Lenoka Harbor. I'm sorry, I'm just gonna be brief. I just have to take exception to some of the things that were stated. I understand everybody's trying to do well for the community, save money, look at statistics, but it can't be random. It has to be on point and straight through and not bouncing topic to topic, first of all, for everybody to watch, because at home, they're shutting off the TV. So I'm asking that a point be made saying on topic, so people don't get bits and pieces and don't get the whole story. But I would like to say that I am proud of this community, I am proud of what the students are doing, what the faculty is doing. I made it through, I could have moved any number of times, but the town and the school districts have always kept me here. It's been a cooperative effort with my own children. And I have to say, to take away and say all these children are contributing to a police rate and statistic is horrible. I have my own niece that just graduated with her doctorate, went all through these schools. I want these people that can make these criticisms, look at those that have gone through this system and the successes that we have, and how much this town and district has grown and has met the challenges, and they'll continue to do so. But we can't just hear blips. There has to be the whole picture. And I'm glad I came to this meeting for the first time in a long time, because you see the whole picture. So again, I want to thank the faculty, the students and everybody for their effort to keep this process going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none? I'm gonna move on to board comments. Mr. Parney, can I start with you tonight?
You certainly can, Mrs. Downing, President Downing. Just want to congratulate our students of the month, Brittany, Kyle and Tyler. Again, I am amazed at the amount of activities they do and yet maintain a fantastic GPA, so great job, guys. Also want to commend Dr. Brower on your presentation tonight, and kudos to Dr. Brower, Dr. Clark, Mr. Savage, the members of the committee for putting together this budget. It's not an envious task to balance the needs of our students and staff and the taxpayers. So I commend you, this is a great budget, nice job. And I'll end with that.
Thank you, Mr. Parney. Mr. Martinak?
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. I'll be brief tonight. I'll, I, I really found the comment prosperous, prosperous young adults to be a great opening that I will follow up on next month, because as the parent of an 18 to 24-year-old, I know dozens and dozens of young Lacy graduates who are prosperous, doing well, gainfully employed, contributing to the economy, the community, giving back, and, and that's the majority, the overwhelming majority of our students. They may not get the coverage on blog sites, but our students are doing well. And every time I turn around, or I go to ShopRite, or I run into parents that I used to coach their, their child when I was back in my coaching days, and they're 22, 24, 25 now, and they tell me what they're doing, I'm, I'm always very impressed by where our graduates are going and what they're doing, whether they're going on somewhere far away from here, or whether they're going out and, and getting education or developing their skills and coming back to Lacy to contribute back in Lacy. So that's a subject I'm happy to talk about, along with solar power. And just on solar, I'll just close with one quote, because I've had a few people ask me about this, including a couple of people at work that live in Lacy, and I run through the numbers, and when I run through the pros and cons, every much pretty asked, pretty much at the end asked me the same question, what are people complaining about? And I said, here's the best analogy I can give you, is if you're a football coach and you say, our goal this year is we want to have a winning record, win the division, go to the Super Bowl, and you go out and you try to do it, at the end of the season, you not only do that, but you have an undefeated season, you romp through the playoffs, you go to the Super Bowl and you win by 10 points, somebody comes up a month later and goes, yeah, but if you'd scored another touchdown, you would have beat the spread if you won by 17 points. I mean, that's kind of what the state's done in this report is. Yeah, you did good, you know, you made, you, you did something that generated revenue and saved tax dollars and all that, but gee, we're gonna look at it six years later and tell you that, you know, you could have done it better. So that's my view of the world. You know, I think the board did something six years ago to try to help the district with both paying for upgrades that we needed, that we had no way to pay for unless we bonded and had the taxpayers for, pay for it. It not only paid for that, it generated revenue, et cetera, et cetera. It's been a financial success. It hasn't cost the Lacy taxpayers a dime. So far, all the debt service on this project has been paid with the, with the SREC revenues, the BPU rebate, rebate, et cetera. So when someone comes up and says, oh, this cost the Lacy taxpayers so much money, I say, no, it hasn't. It hasn't cost the Lacy taxpayers a dime. So anyway, that's my short version of the whole story there on that project. Sorry to be so long.
That's okay, Mr. Martinak. Mrs. McAvoy?
Hi, I just want to say Happy Earth Day to everybody, and congratulate all the high school students from Seussical. It was amazing, a lot of the board members went to it, we had a great time, they all did a terrific job. Congratulations to Kyle, Brittany and Tyler. The budget, Dr. Brower did a great job. I'm excited about the block scheduling, the ice hockey, the jump start for the college, the high school students for college classes. I do have a few questions, I'll be meeting with Mr. Savage next week, because I have a few questions that I don't understand before I vote on it. And I'd like to thank this woman who came and had all the positive comments. Thank you. That's great. I know as board members, we do all we can, we try our hardest, and we all want to make a positive difference. So thank you for coming and having the positive comments. Sorry. Thank you, President Downing.
Thank you. Mr. Schubinger?
Thank you, President Downing. I want to point out that apparently Mr. O'Connor had enough time to speak, but not enough time to listen tonight, because he just left. And that's something that our students learned in kindergarten, so that's, I thought that was kind of interesting. I just want to move on to, just quickly on a number of items. Number one, the budget. I want to thank the administration, the staff for putting together the budget proposal, and I do want to say it's a proposal. You know, it's, superintendent brought this to us, to the board, to the community tonight, it was a nice job. But I just have to reiterate, no one person, or two, or five, or seven, in this community have a blank check of the residents' money. This proposal's gonna be reviewed, scrutinized by the board at a public hearing, we're gonna do that. And even more important than that, is that this entire community needs to scrutinize, review that budget, and hopefully they come out at the budget hearing to tell us what they think about the budget, because it really is a residence budget. It's no one in particular, and it's not even this board's budget. So please come out at the budget hearing. Students, again, not to be too redundant, I'm always pleased to see the great work and effort that our students are, are giving, all of us and themselves and the community. And it kind of ties into some of the comments that were made tonight. I think it's just proof positive, and this underscores the fact that when kids give effort and they have the support at home, coupled, to be coupled with that effort, they can succeed, and they've shown us that they've succeeded for many years in this district. No matter what district you go to around the state of New Jersey, around the country, there's gonna be students who succeed and some that struggle a bit, and that's what makes us, our job's so important. It would be really easy for everyone to be just the greatest student and to have all the support in the world and to just be a brainchild. And we have some of those, but not all of them. So it's a work in progress, but I think the effort of the student and the support of the, of the home is really what makes the difference. And we, someone, I think disputed that tonight, but I disagree. So as far as ratings, I can tell you, whenever I choose to look at other towns and where might be a, a good place to tell my, my brother or friend to move because of this, you know, the quality of life in a particular town, I guarantee you, I'm not sending them to New Jersey Monthly Magazine. I'm not doing that. So there's a lot of empirical data that people should be reviewing that I would, I would forward them to, but it's not gonna be from a magazine or a newspaper or, you know, even the New York Times or that matter. Not a bad paper, but that's not where I'm sending them. Back to the energy project quickly, I, I apologize, I'm not gonna say the exact same thing I've said, probably seven or eight meetings' worth of time with my comments, sound like a broken record, but I do want to say this. It can be scrutinized whether or not this project was as successful as some people in the community would have liked. I think it's highly successful. Mr. Martinak's pointed out several times, and I think quite clearly how much money that this project has produced and saved taxpayer money. But there are residents in other towns who are going to their school board meetings and to their municipal government meetings, saying, how come you're not doing anything about the economic condition in our town or in our school district? You're sitting on your hands, come up with something, do something. Don't just rely on the tax base, on our, on us as residents, to pay for all of your projects. That's what they're going to those meetings about. We have people come into our meetings and we're out looking for applause, but please, we could have sat on our hands and done nothing. We had the foresight as a board and administration, and really the gall to go ahead and do something that at the time we did it, not many people were doing. We could have just sat on our hands, and we'd be in a much worse position today than if we had, or if we had done that. So I want everyone to keep that in mind. Talk about the dollars and cents, the bottom line is, we did a good thing. And finally, I do, although I disagree with people who come before us on occasion, I want to say, our speakers, and we have Mrs. DeSenza, Mr. O'Connor, who has been coming recently, and others, Mr. Moss, I respect the fact that you come to the meeting and express what you have to say. I'm not real popular with reading emails, I gotta say. That was kind of unique tonight, of people who couldn't come. But you come here, yourself, in person, face and name, and tell us what you think. You don't sit at home, hide behind a computer, under a fictitious username, and tell us what we think. So I appreciate that, I really mean that. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Downey?
Thank you, President Downing.
You're welcome.
I think I stand in between us and meeting adjournment, right? So I should be pretty quick tonight. And I'll probably be a little bit longer than you want me to be.
That's all right.
I want to thank the students, Brittany, Kyle, Tyler. Again, you know, wonderful achievement, role models for your fellow students and community. And we talked about a lot of negative things tonight, right? Test scores and how bad things are, and this, that and the other thing. I had the opportunity to tour every school in the district with Dr. Brower and the leadership of each school. And I, and I have to tell you, there's a lot of amazing things going on in this district. There's a lot of great things that go on in this district. There's a lot of great teachers in this district, administration, we have great students. You know, we have some teachers that have been doing this for a long time, and it was nice to see some of them. You know, we have passionate teachers that want the best for our students, we have a passionate administration that wants the best for our students. You know, and I think a lot of people pointed it out tonight, it's not just us up here, the board, it's not just the administration. You know, the parents have to be involved in this too. And you have one individual that came out tonight and made positive comments, and you look up at this audience tonight, it's almost empty. You know, we appreciate your comments too, Mr. Moss, Mr. DeSenza, but if you're a parent in this district and you care about your kids, come out, support the district, speak up. If there's things you want to see, speak up. You know, with that, I'll move on to the budget, right? If you look at the numbers, and I won't go through the numbers, but I think it's a pretty If you look at the numbers, and I won't go through the numbers, but I think it's a pretty aggressive budget. And, and this administration should be applauded for their efforts in keeping things where they are, all with student achievement in mind. Look at some of the programs that we're talking about. We're talking about block scheduling, about STEM, you know, focus on the special needs learner, you know, professional development for staff and students. These are all things that are going to make this district better. So I'll conclude with this. There's a lot of looking backwards in this district, looking at the past. I think we all need to look forward and look at the future, because it's really bright, and we should all believe in the job that we're doing here. So those conclude my, my comments.
Thanks, comments. Thank you. And I will just summarize that, you know, I, I appreciate everyone and their comments. And this board has never put a time limit on comments, because we really, truly believe that everybody has a voice and everybody should be heard. But I have to remind the public, when you speak, that sometimes the negative comments can go very easily into slander. Am I correct?
Yes.
So I'd be very cautious on what you're accusing people, because it could end up being slanderous. I want to say about the budget, I'll talk more at our budget hearing, which I must remind everyone, it's May seventh at six o'clock. Looking at this budget and comparing it to other budgets in the past, this is a very educational budget. As Mr. Giordano said, there's a lot of good educational initiatives in this budget. So I hope people come out on May seventh to talk to us about it and get involved. Yes, the Seussical, the musical, was hysterical. I loved it. I loved every part of it. It was a great, great theatrical performance. The kids did a fabulous job, and I want to commend everyone for that. Thank you, and congratulations to Brittany, Kyle, and Tyler. Again, every, every month, it amazes me what our students do. And at that, we're going to move on to new business. So if everyone can turn to page forty-one. Could I have a motion, please, for items A through I?
Move.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. And if you're there with me, we have a lot of donations that I should read on page forty-three. Please approve and accept the following generous donations. An Avet fishing wheel, I hope I said that right, fisherman, from Lacy Marine to the high school. This is all to the high school, the following items. Surf fishing rod by Ted Adam Adamsic. Fishing rod from William Gale. Marine towing package from Sea Tow. Two fairs for Seahorse from Seahorse Charter Boat. And a softball pitching machine from Lacy Storm, care of Mr. Frank Santorel. For Cedar Creek, we have a variety of books and CDs that were donated by the Shoe Flat family. Also at Cedar Creek, we have a pizza and salad, donation of pizza and salad for the blood drive from Papouli's Restaurant. Sandwich wraps and cookies for the blood drive from Fuchello's. Bagels for the blood drive, Manhattan Bagel, I'm getting hungry listening to this. Pasta and salad for the blood drive, Anthony's Pizzeria. Bottled water for the blood drive, Cedar Creek PTA. And also used ink cartridges for the recycling program from Walmart of Lacy. At the Mill Pond, we have two generous donations, a variety of sports items and soccer balls from Mr. and Mrs. Kuhn. And a check donation for grade-six trip to visit Philadelphia Zoo from the Mill Pond School PTA for a total of two-hundred, two-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. At Lenoka Harbor, we have a check donation for grade-three to visit the Ocean County Historical Society for a thousand dollars from the Ocean of, from the Ocean County Historical Society. A student's dictionary from the Rotary Club of Lacy. Massage therapy sessions from Botaglia Chi- Botaglia Chiropractic. Banks, cups, and pens from Chase Bank. This is all for Forker River School now. One-week memberships from the Gladiator Boxing Gym in Forker River. Gift card from Meat Barbecue Company. Gift card for New Concepts Hair Salon. A muffin basket from Perkins Restaurant. Free pizza pie coupons from Favola's Pizzeria. And last but not least, used children's books from Catherine Fiat- Fiacca? Fiacca? Sorry if I mispronounced your name, for donation of one hundred dollars for those books. A lot of donations, and we thank everyone for their generous, for their generosity. Thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
Move, please.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. Yes, excuse me. At the bottom of page forty-four, item three, programs and curriculum. Could I have a motion for A?
Move.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. On the top of page forty-six, professional days, could I have a motion? Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. On page forty-six, item five, use of facilities, motion, please? Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mr. Carney. Mrs. Downing.
Yes. Item six, at the top of page forty-seven, certificated personnel, items A through H.
Move.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
I'm abstaining on item G. Item G, and go yes on the remaining items.
You're right. I'm sorry about that. I catch that hard.
Okay. Mr. Martinak?
Yes, I will abstain on G also.
Okay.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. Page forty-nine, item seven, support non-certificated staff personnel, A through G.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy. Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorell. And Mrs. Downing.
That's okay, yes. Okay, are there any other items to add to these? Seeing none, could I have a motion for adjournment?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, meaning adjourned.